February 28th, Select Board.
You ever heard that before?
Yeah, I have. Call to order. Any adjustments to the agenda?
I'd like to reverse C and B on number five, unfinished business. It just would make more sense that we talked about financials before we talked about the other.
Okay. Who did the, did the, who, who wrote it?
I did. When I got to organizing it today, I noticed that it should have been the other way around.
Okay, any other adjustments to the agenda? I'll entertain a motion for acceptance of the minutes February 14th, 2018. Definitely accept the minutes.
Second.
Motion's been moved and signed to accept the minutes of February 28th, or February 14th as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Can we have, just a little, first off, you ever move that fast? Under the last section where it says the board moved to executive session, oncoming, the executive chair goes around and they put an ad, it doesn't say that we accepted his resignation, which is what we came out to do.
I didn't put that in there, so it's not me.
We accepted whose resignation?
Ronnie Clay's.
We both accepted his resignation?
Well, if you read it, it says we came out and replaced an ad for his wish him good, but it doesn't officially say, if you're reading it, you didn't know what happened, you're trying to read between the lines.
Oh, I see.
Wouldn't you think?
It didn't officially happen, but I agree.
So, could we amend it to say, I mean, we didn't, we didn't vote to accept his resignation, but we could say, a new road foreman.
We should have come out, well, actually, we should, we could leave it like it is and then turn around and add it to other business tonight and do it, because we should have actually came out and accepted.
That would make more sense.
Yeah, why don't we do that, okay?
What are we doing?
Leaving the longboat, then we're, we're gonna do something else.
Yep. Good idea.
So now I'll say aye.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Communications and public comments. Does that letter from Cynthia wannabe done under that?
It's under financial discussions and questions.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll go on to unfinished business. Articles of the town meeting, information needed.
In your packet, you have a yellow card that is not complete. It was just a sample of what I could do for you, each and every one of you, with your motions and your articles that you're going to speak on. I'd like to go through each one of these and make sure that all of you have all the information you want, but please look at your, your white copy. The yellow copy has already been outdated, but I put them in your packet because I want you to tell me that that looks good to you, or do you want them on just white paper? What do you want?
Nancy, can I have a clean up, please? Nancy? Nancy, can I have a clean up, please?
So, does the yellow background?
Yes, that's fine, I have no problem with the yellow background.
You can see, you can see it?
Yeah.
Okay. So we use yellow. So, Article six and 10 are Sheldon's, so on his, you have no, no facts. I didn't put anything there. I can. But I really don't have any that.
I'm fine with what I've got, because I know what I'm going to say as far as Article 10 and Article 6 is really not. That's pretty boiler, boilerplate on some bolts.
Okay. Susan, you have Article 7?
Yes. I do.
And you should be looking at the white copies.
Yeah, yeah, I know what I, um.
You took me in a burger, didn't you?
Yeah, she shuffled.
That's what I did. But I was looking for mine, so anyway, okay, seven.
So as you and I talked when you came, you wanted to know what we're, what we were looking at replacing?
Right. So, and that's for this year, what's, what's the, what's an arm, what's an arm? Is that a piece of equipment?
It is, it's a mower arm.
Okay. And do we have some estimate about what these will cost?
Not yet.
Okay.
We're working on it.
Okay, so the carryover was, and this was what I was looking for, $11,000 roughly from FY17, right?
Correct.
And then, that's what I can't find, and so, the current year, we've spent $88,000?
Ish, yep.
Ish?
To make it a carryover of $52,296.
No, wait a minute, $11,000 from FY17.
I have this breakdown somewhere, but I did.
Where you seen $11,000?
That was in the budget, I mean, in the audit, excuse me.
It was in the audit.
But it's not on this piece of paper we're reading.
That's correct, I didn't do the math on your fact sheet, but I can. So, if that's what you would like, if you want to do the math.
No, I just wanted to know where it comes from.
You're mixing, you're mixing two years.
Yep.
So, this is what I'm, I'm, tonight's, when we get started with the financials, I'm going to be very clear, you need to keep all three years separate and do not combine them. Do not try to figure out why one year is not blending to the second year.
But we talked about the $11,000.
We did, we got.
Carried over to.
We figured it out, which I can do on your card if you, if you want it. I can do the math for you. On the, on the final card. If you, that's what you want.
That would be good.
Okay, so, I'm going to put math?
Yeah, I'm just wondering where the $52,000, where does the $52,000 come from at the end of FY18?
Because we had 11.
Yep.
We added 130 to it, we spent only part of that and ended up with a surplus of $52,000 to be carried over to this year.
Right, okay.
Okay, so I will get the math to you.
Yep. For one, and we thought around 88.
FY17 to 18.
Yes, that would be good. Okay, alright. Yep, and last year's purchase, meaning FY17?
Excuse me?
You said last year's purchase was a one-ton flatbed? That's FY17, when you say last year?
No.
Last year's was FY17, was a one-ton flatbed pickup.
Yes, FY17.
That's correct. You want FY17 on that?
Oh, no, yeah, you should put that down, yeah.
It's actually 1718, right?
No, 1718 is what we're in right now.
FY17, which goes from 16 to 17. This year is 17 to 18, when we're replacing the Ford tractor and the Dodge truck. That's the current year, which is FY18, and, no, sorry.
FY19.
Yeah, FY19, and so.
This is why I don't want you to mix years, because it gets very confusing.
Well, I just asked, what do you mean by last year, what year is last year?
FY17.
Yes, okay, thank you.
But even, even I'm a little confused, so, you ended the fiscal year, when you say end of fiscal year 18, present year, but then you're saying, in fiscal, this present year is fiscal year 17, how can that be?
No, this is fiscal year 18, we didn't really talk about what we.
No, you said last year purchased, that was fiscal year 17.
That's correct.
Right.
This year is 18, and our proposed budget is 19.
Right.
Why would you mix 17 and 18 together?
That's, I, I, so I didn't.
Right.
But she wants to have that back, so she'll have it in front of her.
We're mixing them together because there was $11,000 left over from FY17.
In the audit.
Yes, and then we added that to the $130,000, and then we spent so far this year.
X amount.
So, okay, so here's another question, so FY19, these two things are being replaced in FY19, is that our proposal, or is that FY18?
That's our proposal.
Okay, so, in FY18, will we have what we purchased this year?
We haven't asked, we haven't told them what we're going to do in the past, because we, until we actually do it, we don't know 100% what we're going to do.
Right, but if someone asks me, I don't necessarily am going to give a rundown, but if someone asks me, what are you going to buy this year?
Okay, so what was your question again?
My question is, here we have FY19, this is what we kind of like to do, this is FY17, this is what we purchased, in FY18, what have we purchased? Or are we, FY18, the current year we're in, and we talked about, and you told me, usually have your stuff bought early in the year.
Yeah, this is a mistake on my part, that's 18 was the flatbed and the, and the ton tag.
Okay.
That was this year's purchase, early.
Can I ask a question?
All right, thank you.
What's a ton tag as a cast, what's a tag?
It's a tag along trailer. That's what they used to call it years ago, and now they just abbreviated it to tag.
So when you say last year, you mean the last calendar year, and you're not talking about the last fiscal year? Because the last fiscal year was.
Was 17, and that was FY18.
Okay.
That is my thing.
That makes more sense then, okay, gotcha. Okay, we're good then.
Does that?
I think you're going to want the.
I was just going to say, it was, I was just listening to you, and there's no way what you were saying made sense to me.
Does it make sense now?
It does now.
Okay.
Okay, they, we, it all came at one time, and you're trying to split it up to two years, but you.
What if it, it came, what are you talking about it, what does the word it mean? It meaning money or equipment?
The truck in the flat, in the flatbed, you're saying, there's a truck in a, with a dump body.
Yep.
The flatbed pickup is that same truck?
No, it's not.
So tell me what truck you bought, the Dodge truck you bought.
They haven't done it yet, it's a plan, right, for FY19?
One ton, the last line, the one-ton flatbed pickup in ton, 20-ton tag, was done this year in July.
I'm with you on that, I agree with you on that.
What they want to replace, as you know Craig, is the, the small one-ton dump body that Mark is driving.
Okay, so now I'm back on the same thing, so, see, that's what's confusing.
That's why I don't like to mix the years.
Right, I'm going to say, if you had just one statement, this is where we are.
I will put these in for you, so that you have them in chronological order, and if somebody.
If somebody asks you what you're buying, you would say it, but if you just don't even say it.
No, I know, but if someone says you've got $130,000, what are you going to buy this year?
You would tell them you're going to buy a Dodge, you're going to replace this.
Yes.
But in the, when you're giving the facts, you would say, here's the facts, this is what we did, and this is what we have.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
And I'll put them in, in order for you.
Thank you.
What are the hours on the tractor? Somebody's, somebody's going to ask for that.
They will, then I'm going to say, Russ, what are the hours on the tractor?
They never do.
It's a.
They did on the last, they did in 2002 when we bought this tractor, because it was like.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was a lot of controversy when.
Yeah, but going back to where, I, I would have wanted to ask the voters to buy the excavator, because one of the reasons why we wanted the excavators, we would put a lot less hours on that tractor. Back.
On the back.
Nothing to do with the tractor.
The tractor, all we use, all we use in the tractor for.
Even I know that. Even I remember that.
Once in a while for raking, or we usually have the raking, but it's got diddles of hours on it, but it's 300 hours. That's nothing for a tractor.
You can get here to 2005.
Okay, I'm good.
You're all set?
I am.
Nancy has Article A. Are you comfortable with what I got for you?
I am.
Other board members want to weigh in?
This is accumulation. I'm not going to, unless somebody asks, I'm not going to.
Go further than.
Go further than.
Yep.
So you're not going to tell them we're going to close 121 down and have to go around?
If they ask about the details, I can definitely walk them through the thought process to it, yes.
I mean, if they ask, then I'll say the fund has this in it, and they will close 121.
Toby's got Article 9. Her facts are pretty simple, it was a mistake in adding the $4,200 into the proposed budget. If this allocation is voted down, then that money will be pulled out of the present budget. Not a huge deal. And then Craig's becomes a lot easier, Article 11, because it's going to actually be slid according to Fletcher, he's going to try to slide it into Article 7 and vote it at first appearance, without the other articles being voted on. So, these numbers won't change, you don't have to guess. As the other articles are voted on and passed or, or denied, we'll be taking the tally for the tax rate only, we will not be throwing it out on the floor. That's what he was trying to give away.
We don't, once the voters pass each article.
They know that they're adding it to that number that you.
Right, so technically, what you're saying, we don't amend the bottom line.
That's what he said.
Which means that I would never have to say anything again.
That's correct.
Trash recycling is up 3%, but it's as per contract, correct? We have a contract, and so it's.
We have an, we had an extension, a contract extension.
So it's up 3%, but it's, we're still under contract for that, so it's.
It's going to get a lot deeper into the next section of, of discussions, to clarify that, but yes, you're exactly right. It went up 3%, and I even have the number to the, to, the difference between the two also.
So, go ahead.
I'll get together with you on this, I wanted, I still think we, somewhere in here I got to add about the cost, that we're, the amount of money that we're sticking into the, into the office, so that they know that we have the right to move those numbers around, and I got to figure out how to say that in a better way, obviously.
Okay.
Makes sense, because.
Yep, yep.
If, if somebody comes and says, well, how much are you going to have for this department? You're not 100% sure, we're just, I'll tell you 100%, we're going to stay within the $289,000 or whatever it was.
We're not going to exceed this budget, but it could be less.
Or we can, we have the right, just so they know to move around, because I don't want somebody to think that if we earmark something for, let's say, the listeners, there's 100% chance it's going to go to the listeners.
I'd like to make a motion that would allow Toby to do all of these articles at town meeting.
I second that. Okay, so I.
We have a motion on the floor that's being seconded, allow Toby to do.
See what happens when you miss meeting? Okay.
I withdraw my motion, thank you.
Okay, can I start with stupid questions, or?
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
Do we want to go through all of these?
Sure, sure.
And then if you have any questions, I think it's going to be easier.
Where are we at? Where are you at? What piece of paper you holding?
I'm looking at Article 11, I'm looking at the sum to be raised by taxes, so I'll have.
Please, let's, let's, let's do it as I, I've got it planned.
Yeah, okay.
Then if you have questions, then, if I haven't answered them, but I feel like we need to start from the beginning and work our way to the end, and then if you have questions still, then I can work on them for you, but if I, if we just start doing it willy-nilly, we're going to, we're going to get ourselves into, into a, you're not going to be clear of exactly what.
Clear, I don't know what willy-nilly means, so.
All right, so under unfinished business, we're going to do Article C first, and then go back to B.
Thank you, yes.
Which is financial discussion and questions.
That's correct. So. I'd like to start with the audit, I'd like to start with FY17. Okay, so if you didn't bring your audit, I do have extra copies, but if you brought it, please pull it out. You have one, Craig?
No, I guess I didn't, I brought all the other papers.
You should definitely bring yours to town meeting. In case there's a question.
Took off, I had everything.
It doesn't matter, there it is, just leave it here, that one, because I'll, I'll be putting them out, out front. The whole audit is summarized and, and very clear in pages three to eight. Everything beyond that is accounting, I don't want to say mumbo jumbo, but it's an, it's an accounting response to the funds, to all of the things that you really don't have control over, that just carry over from year to year. But if you read pages three to eight and understood pages three to eight, you'd be in great knowledge of what happened in FY17. And it's hard to remember what we did in 17 versus 18 versus what we're proposing in 19. So that's why I want to take each year, go through it, and kind of, kind of just put it in perspective. I'm going to go page to page, so page three, the first line, it says, "The town's modified cash basis net position decreased by $487,000." On page six, it explains this. It's middle of the page, dispersments. You can see that the general government, that was the, 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 the lack of raising the taxes appropriately, made, made that difference on the first line. You work your way down through, you see the capital outlay of highways and streets, those were grants that were reallocated after the fact. So, our net position went down 487,000, which is saying, wow my God, that sounds horrible. But when you look at the net increase of the revenue, it takes, on the same front page now, page three, it takes our fiscal year surplus from $666,750 down to $401,454. That is more in line to what the taxpayers talked about, of having a minimum amount of surplus, plus the working surplus, which, from talking to emergency management, talking to VLCT, it still is a range. The working part of, of the budget should have 5%, so that in between the raising of taxes, we can have monies to continue the, the year without having to borrow, and then emergency management tells you that they should have around 15%. Right now, we have just under 20%, which is those two figures, pretty clear, because 20% is $420,000.
So, right, when you say right now, you're talking about the $401,000?
I'm talking at the end of FY17.
Okay, that's what you're talking about, alright.
That's correct, we don't know what we got now.
I know, that's why when you said right now, I'm like, you don't really know.
Right now, according to the FY17.
Yeah.
Audit.
So let's, let's go back to, now, we're struggling with this, almost 200,000 that we didn't tax, so in a scenario, it did come out of that year, because we didn't raise enough taxes by 200,000. If we had actually taxed them that 200,000, would it, would that 401 be back closer to 200, 600?
Yes, it would.
Okay, so that's where, if somebody asked what happened, that's where we lost that.
That's correct, we, we did not charge for the 130, the 15, and we paid an extra greater rent.
And that's the year, 2000, it ended there, that's why we, that's the easiest answer. Why it didn't go down, we lost 200,000 in taxes.
That's correct. Okay, and again, I would, I would ask you to read that, these, these five pages, when you have a chance, but I'm going to bring your attention to right now, the summary on page eight. Economic factors and next year's budgets and rates. Some of the economic factors were factored in formulating the budget for FY17 and 18. A careful examination of the overall budget was done, with the wishes of our taxpayers to reduce the surplus, in doing so, the taxpayers enjoyed a one-time relief that was compiled, compounded by a miscalculation in the taxes to be raised. All in all, the surplus was cut, and the budget still supports the highway department and public safety. The voters approved a budget for fiscal year 18 in the amount of $2,050,385, a net increase of $92,761. The increase is primarily due to the budget line items for the greater promissory note and 3% employee pay increases, and $13,000 increase for the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department, and 5% increase in both health and property insurances. This financial report is, is designed to provide a general overview for the town of Westminster's Vermont's financial condition. And it says, if you have any questions, please call the town manager. So, it is a snapshot of our total budget and what we did with monies and how it all progressed. It's not supposed to be a line item by line item explanation, it's a, it's a snapshot of what we do. Next year, the audit is a three-day, huge audit versus a one-day audit. So we will get the, the full picture of the last three years of what has happened, you'll have a better, a better view of it.
So, without mixing years, but in this case, we're going to have to. So, when Susan gets up and does the amount of money for the equipment and everything, if somebody was to ask her what we owe on, on the greater, at the end of 2013, we made some payments, so we brought it down to 122.8. This is not counting the payment that we're in this year.
That's correct.
So even though we made a payment too early, we're still going to make the payment this year.
That's correct. We're going to end up with a four-year, no, not a five.
Right, okay.
So we not only paid for the, the greater with $100,000 plus the trade-in, we also paid, made a payment to the bank.
That's why I wanted to bring back that back, so if somebody asks, where are we at with it?
So that's, that is part of the, the lack of surplus that we had, was the 130, the 15, and the 32.5, because those three payment, those three things were not calculated.
Yes.
So that's part of the 200,000, the majority of the 200,000 that we lost in the total net assets.
There's one, it's not a huge, under capital L, like, it says during the year.
What page are you on?
Same one that you were just reading from.
Eight?
It says during the year, the top of the thing, it says during the year, the town spent $21,228 on new front doors and side panels, we did that three years ago.
Two years ago, but we didn't pay for them completely until this fiscal year, that's why they're there.
All right.
So again, in your spare time, these, these five pages are, or six pages are, are key to the audit.
Is that, can you go back to that? So it says, if I'm reading this right, it says 321,000 was spent on the greater update.
Where are you now, Craig?
Same place.
Along with an excavator and a new truck, well, I know the new truck and excavator was leased.
What page are you on?
Same page, page seven.
So, if I'm reading it right. It says that 321, that's, so it's not saying we bought the greater for 321, it's just saying that we, you see what I'm saying? It, we, there's three items there, that total, is that what it's saying, three items total, but we didn't buy the greater, we bought, we paid 300 on the greater alone, but what you're saying is, we spent 321,000 total, of which we bought these three items, but we didn't actually pay for the whole greater.
That's correct. That 321 is broke up with the 130 from the equipment funds transfer, the 91,000 for the excavator, and $100,000 for the greater.
That's what I'm saying.
That's the 321, those are the three figures.
That's what I'm saying. Just three items that added to 321. When you first read it, it says 321 spent on the greater update. I was like, whoa, wait.
Comma, along with the excavator and a new truck.
Okay, because we actually spent 300 on the greater. Well, you know, 300 something, minus 70, yes, minus 75,000.
Questions on the audit on FY seventeen?
The retreatment fund, where does that money come from?
The retreatment fund is the $15,000, no, that's the bridge, sorry. It is in our budget as a line item. It is.
That we put in every year to pave the roads?
That's correct.
Essentially, that's what that means, pave the road?
That's correct.
It's part of the maintenance. You added up the maintenance, highway maintenance. Is that what it's on here?
It's coming. I'm going to write over it. It's $125,000 that we transfer, and that's in the budget, and it's under.
Right above it called Class II General Transfer to Retreatment, 125,000.
That's correct. And that is in the budget every year to maintain our tar roads. This year, and I say this year, meaning FY 18, we had a huge grant that we got.
Oh, yeah.
We're good?
I'm good. So far, so good.
I'm okay.
So I guess then, moving into the current year, in your packet, you have a current budget status report dated 2/23/18. I have a few things I'd like to highlight for you. On page one, that's this one.
I'm working on it.
You want to wait for Craig?
Yeah, he said, "Be right back."
Did you take your time of order, too?
Yeah, I never keep stuff in order.
So this is your today as of, is that what this is?
2/23. That's your done from taxes.
How'd you do with that far away?
Know what the looks of are.
Okay.
What was not taken out of this figure?
The school and the fire.
Okay.
She's in the process right now of doing that.
Thirty-one, right, yep.
Yeah.
That's going to be done before town meeting?
It is going to be done before town meeting. Craig, we're on to the current year now. So looking at that report, you take that, the total of the revenue, you have to subtract the 1,672, 192.89, that's on the first page. That is not our money. That's not the town's money. It's the school and the fires. So, long story short, we're doing very well on this year's revenue. And the three items that are very apparent is we have 65,852.38 of delinquent taxes that we cannot truly estimate when you're talking about revenue. You never know if you're going to get $1 or a lot of dollars. So that item added to state aid to highways, which is about halfway down the page, third set of numbers. Instead of 159, we have 249. Well, that, it's a little deceiving, but that is one of the grants that we received.
Where are you? You lost me.
So we're talking the second line down, delinquent property taxes, that line. Then the 249 in the second column under actual. We have got $90,000 that we didn't anticipate there. And then going down to reimbursement of parks and forests, that's the fifth column down, fifth set of numbers down, 38,400.
Where's that from?
Town Forest.
It's Town Forest, the cutting.
I thought we wouldn't get 45.
We got some from, when they first started, they put a down payment on, so.
So what, that was in?
FY seventeen, because this is current, this is FY 18. So we got the down payment, because remember, they were supposed to do this in December, and they didn't. But we signed contracts before that, so. But anyway, so 38,4. So those added together is an approximate surplus of approximately 160. I'm sorry?
193,000.
But with the overall forecast of it, we'll be in good shape to saying about $160,000 is going to be our forecast of estimated surplus for this fiscal year we're in right now, on the revenue side.
Where's the revenue from State Police?
We haven't got it yet.
Haven't got it yet.
That's going to be paid in October, which will be in this current year, which I can't estimate how much that's going to be, but that will be more money. You're correct. So the forecast, again, for this fiscal year, surplus is about $160,000 in the, on the revenue side. So then, looking at the expenditures, we overspent, and it's been brought to our attention by the questions from Cynthia, which we'll get into later, later in the meeting, that we overspent on the maintenance on the Northwestminster Community House by about 12,469. The West West Town Hall of 7,040. And these are, I can pull these numbers for you where they're located. Page five of 14, second set of numbers down, middle of that, under municipal buildings. You see the 12,000 that we overspent? Matt Brennan's bill was 15,968, but we had 35 in the budget. So the over expenditure is 12,468.
That's Northwestminster?
That's Northwestminster's. And then we have the West West Building at 7,039.60.
And that actually is less because of the allocation that the West is supposed to get that is combined with.
That's correct.
Right.
So with those, oh, and I've got the guardrails, sorry, the next page, page six of 14, first set of numbers halfway down, says guardrails. We overspent by 9,359.96. Do you see that?
Oh, yeah.
Was that because we paid up, unless Mr. West, we put new grad rails up?
That's correct, but we got reimbursed, but you have to show it as an expense.
Right.
But we got reimbursed in our grant. Do you see that, Sheldon? You're all set?
Yep.
Okay, so adding those three, and then looking at what we have left to spend for this fiscal year, I can, with tongue in cheek, state that our total spending will be just under our budget by about $10,000. So we will not, we will not go over our budget, our total bottom line this year. Even though you've spent these over expenditures, we have some other items that are going to come in less.
So far.
So far, well, and I forecast, I knew which ones were still variable, and so I kind of took those in consideration, and I was very cautious, and so it should be under 10,000.
I think you should be in good shape because diesel fuel and heating oil is all down, too.
But we lowered that number because we were seeing that, but.
If I see, you're right. You're about halfway through that.
What page?
Page six, go down there where it says gas, fuel, oil. Your budget is at 140. It looks like you're just about halfway through it. You see what I'm saying? And you're more than halfway through the year.
Yep.
And you've actually gone through the worst.
But Craig, as you know, the tank lasts and lasts and lasts, and then all of a sudden, you spend a boatload because you're filling your tanks.
And we actually did it, but what we did last year is we had the money, so we filled it up just before.
That's correct.
So we actually started the year full. And I've seen in the past where we actually didn't fill it up.
And it might be one of those years, but right now, I know we're doing okay. We're not filling it because we have an inspection in April. And he wants the levels down to do the inspection on the tanks, but anyway, so.
But it looks like we're in good shape.
It looks like we're in good shape. We should be no less than the $10,000 under our total budget.
Are we spending significant overtime for, I'm just wondering about all the work the roads has been doing because of all the storms. How's that working out? Seems like they must spend the road just about every day this winter.
We're doing overtime, as we always have. Mark is not doing overtime, so that leaves us with the six guys to do the work after the storm. So we've been having, you know, you go out every day. You go out at like 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock in the morning to check our roads, to make sure that they're not icy. Now, we're checking the roads to see if they're muddy, if we can let contractors travel on our roads. So we're not over what we typically do.
They say we should be in good shape.
But we should be, it's not been a horrible winter.
No.
It's been a good winter.
You see people, you know, you see them go out at night, but we don't realize that they go home sometimes at 8:00 in the morning.
Exactly.
And, you know, they don't work the rest of the day.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
Yep. If they go out at 2:00, they work their road until it's safe, and then they camp. After their eight hours, they can go home, or they do some stay and do repair work because machines don't run themselves. They don't. As much as I would like them to, they don't. They all are mechanics. They're all mechanics. So in your packet, as we're still continuing with the FY 18, is, I threw this in here, is to give you a kind of a hint to why our surplus bounces around. And half of it is because of the delinquent taxes that we receive.
Okay, so wait a minute, well, you put this in here, you're talking about the delinquent, is that what you're talking about?
I put this whole sheet in there, which you haven't never seen since I've been here. I've never printed this off.
Is this delinquent taxes?
This is delinquent taxes.
Okay, gotcha.
So in your packet, you have, for the first time that I've been here, I've never printed this off for you because I really didn't know that we had.
Past when we had a good town manager, we saw him quite a bit.
Thank you. So looking at the bottom line, that's really.
Yeah, that really was.
Really what I wanted you to look at is the back page, 16 of 16. These numbers get very staggering as you're looking at them.
So does this mean that we have a total delinquent taxes of 662,000? Is that what that means?
That's what that means.
As much as you look at it all the time, it always seems to come back down, no matter what.
What do you mean, "come back down"?
It seems like when you look at it, there's certain times of the year when you look at it right after, and you see people ate, and then all of a sudden, it just keeps coming in, it keeps coming in, and then.
This is not one year's worth of delinquent taxes. This is the last 10 years. So, yeah, you might see 100,000 of that bounce down. But the majority of this has been sitting on our books for well over just this past year.
I've been here for quite a long time. I don't ever remember us ever adjusting it, though. We can't. I mean, it's always there. I don't remember us coming and saying, "Well, let's just write this off because we'll never get it."
You can do that.
You can do it.
You have, you have the right.
Not like I'm saying, since I've been here, I don't remember doing it.
There's a few of these that need to be addressed, and I'm going to bring them to your attention one at a time or two at a time. And we're going to work on these. Some of them are very, very bad on our part for just letting them keep going. And there might be good reasons for them, but I don't know that.
Can you come back and at least reassure us that they're not going to disappear?
Absolutely.
In other words, that there's no way they could sell a piece of property off and not get this bill paid?
Well, I'm going to tell you right now, I was told about a month and a half ago that three of the trailers were pulled out of Shady Pines without our knowledge, and the fire department responded to it and started trying to count the trailers and couldn't because they're missing. So that means that some of these delinquents are from the trailer park, and the trailers are no longer in the park. So I'm going to have a conversation with the park manager. They have to take some sort of credit for this. And yes, it's a federal-funded, state-owned, no, not state-owned. It's the Wyndham Housing Authority that owns it. So Tom Young is the park manager. I've been dealing with him. He's very responsive to our requests. So I will have some conversations with him, find out which trailers are missing and why, and also why some of these people have been living in the trailer park for up to 10 years free.
Now, do we have any right, basically, to not allow them to fill those three spaces up?
We're going to find that out. I don't know that. I just got this, and I figured you guys should see it.
I could see this as a never-ending, you know, if we have no teeth in the matter, to say, "No, we're not going to put any more trailers on these vacant lots until we have a plan in place."
Can we ask them to notify us if somebody is going to pull out?
Exactly. Somehow, there's got to be more communication.
It's going to be the bigger picture, too, from the sense that, I don't know how many times we've done heating and systems there, we've done insulation there. So why couldn't we be involved to say that the next trailer that goes in there is going to be leased updated so that they, it's already insulated, is that, why would we allow somebody to move a trailer and then didn't ask to go get money to insulate it and get fuel assistance and everything else?
That one, I don't know.
And then you can't tax it much because I assume that we're taxing them on the worth of the trailer.
That's correct.
Right.
And some of these have now owed more than what there were.
Yeah.
That's why we can't bring in a tax sale, because nobody wants to spend, you know, $3,800 on a trailer that doesn't have worth.
I know a person who just bought one there for five years ago and paid six hundred and eighty dollars for the trailer.
Yeah, so that's, that's the struggle, that's the, the the obstacle that we'll be looking at, but I will be bringing these to you.
So some of these are way over two years old and haven't been put up for tax sales or anything.
That's correct, and that's why I would be looking at them.
When we first got on, when I first got on before, did we use the actually, someplace I remember it used to be the town report, we used this to actually list.
Can't do that.
It was, it's up to, no, you, you can, but it's up to the town and the town didn't want them on there. We voted on it at a town meeting
Somewhere along the way.
Eight, ten years ago, before I, before I got here.
Remember that whole town meeting.
Don't we have to be a little careful on that with right to privacy?
No. Nope. Other towns, we're still getting town reports with delinquent taxes on them. So it's up to the town and we voted as a town.
We did.
Not put them in there.
I know that.
Birth and deaths.
They used to do that.
They're still doing them some places, but we, we called the
If we'd known it would have been a good thing, but it's also probably something you should earmark for next year when we do motions.
Articles.
When we're doing articles to read, to, to make it do an article about putting them back into the town report.
And see if it applies. Not as much as the town report because it's expensive, but what if we wanted to, you could actually print it, put it in the back.
Well, what you wouldn't do, you wouldn't print all the years, you'd put the name and the dollar amount.
Exactly.
So that it's only just the one list. And I saw a very creative town report where they used columns. And had the, I mean, you had to really start paying attention to columns because they had all the names on one page and they just had the dollar, name, dollar amount. No parcel, no, no frills.
We used to have the, we used to have the star next to it, which means that
They paid some of it.
They paid or they made arrangements, so basically they're okay.
The one I was looking at this morning, it had a little asterisk at the bottom and said payments could have been made to, to the above figures. But if at a certain date, they, which would be February, for us, it would have been February twelfth at four o'clock, those names are in that town report, bang, it's, it's all done. So, yeah, it would, it's, it's an interesting factor that we, we don't take advantage of to help push the progress, but.
Might not be a bad idea.
To revisit. Um, and you're, keeping, keeping with your
Didn't let get onto this more than she had though.
All right, moving along to what?
Your next page in your packet is the grants for FY seventeen eighteen. If somebody asks, you'll have this. A lot of this information that I've given you tonight, you should bring to, with you to town meetings so that you have it to fall back on. But these were the grants that we received. So we know like as in the number three, we've already done that. It's completed and we've been paid, reimbursed. Number eight, we have not been reimbursed, but it is, it's in the final phases of being completed.
What's number eight?
Excuse me, number two rather, sorry, I was looking at eight thousand. It's at eight.
Not been reimbursed.
We have not been reimbursed.
And that was that map?
That was the
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. High risk roads, number one, we, we haven't seen that group for four years now. We received that a long time ago. Fitzpatrick got the job. We're supposed to do it last fall, things fell through. So he's slated to do it as soon as spring hits for number four and number five. Number five has been, been, has been paid.
So
Well, wait a minute.
This highlight that you gave me, you said in introduction, you got, one of the things of why the budget was up is up eight percent because of Act sixty-four. But on the other hand, we got twenty thousand dollars of this, but these are two, that's last year seventeen eighteen, and I'm talking about eighteen ninety, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that yellow card, you're going to ding because it's not correct. I've updated your, all your figures on your white card.
And I know that
Those were just a sample.
Right, but basically, and sometimes when we see the expenditure up, what we have to explain is we actually get offset revenue.
You're exactly right.
You know.
You're exactly right.
So high risk roads grant received in September of twenty fourteen.
That means you received the
Received the grant, not the money. You don't get money until you get it done. So you received the grant in June of two thousand seventeen, but we won't, we will not spend the money until
Okay.
Two thousand eighteen. So any questions on the current year? We know why we overspent on the Northwest Community House. You know why you overspent on the line items for the West West Town Hall. Those are very clear. We know we can cover it in the budget that, that we're in now. We're going to overspend on a few line items and we're going to underspend on, on more.
And we didn't talk about increasing the maintenance, building maintenance budget?
We did not, and why we, we did talk about it, but we, we left it the same is because at this point in time, you need to bring under other business in, at town meeting, what are the wishes of the taxpayers to continue on the Northwest Community House? We know West West Town Hall is, is good to go. They're going to need, they've got a little bit more paint, they're going to need some, some small things.
But that stands to like fifty-five hundred dollars that we actually spent because they're allocated fifteen hundred supposedly.
Yes, but they haven't been. That was in that thirty-five hundred that we spent. So when you're looking dollars for donuts, you overspent the twelve that I showed you for the Northwest Community House and the seven thousand for the, for the West West Town Hall. But we know, that was one of the questions is why do you keep overspending, stuff like that with, without the taxpayer's knowledge? You know it was maintenance that was brought to our attention. We had, we had public pressure to open the, the West West Town Hall. You deemed it as, as not just cosmetic, it was structural damage that we needed to fix. While we were doing it, we did get it to ADA accessible. We did it right, hence the cost. That building, there was no talk of it being sitting dormant. We have use for it. Where the Northwest Community House, we haven't got a use for it yet. But are we, that is, ours, is the general public willing to spend somewhere around you know, I can't even remember, what was the figure for the roof that I gave you, the estimate?
Fourteen.
Yeah.
Something around fourteen.
So we have to ask about that. Do we do that? I'll, I'll make sure I get that.
I was going to talk about that and the question is, I still was a little confused. Because of the new way we lay it out where you're actually discussing the budget and not the articles. Do you discuss it at that budget or you wait till the articles are done and discuss it?
But it's not in the budget, the money for the roof, so.
It can be from, since you can take it out of general fund in order to use it for emergency.
No, where you're going to talk about the community house is in the proper business at the very end.
That's what I'm trying to say.
So your budgets will be all passed and if, at that point, they have the right to add monies to the budget they just approved.
Then guess what I'm saying, is that at the end of all the articles get done, that's where you, you would discuss.
That's correct. Is there any other proper business in front of this, this body? Sheldon will, will raise his hand and say, yes, we would like public comment on the Northwest Community House. We've spent fifteen thousand dollars on it so far just to, to replace the sills and make it structurally sound. We know we have a roof that needs to be fixed for roughly fifteen thousand dollars. Do we want to do that or do we want to put it on the market? What do we want to do?
Or do we want, or, or we can, I mean, realistically, we could wait even one more year on the roof and we could put it on and and we could ask for the monies at town meeting.
Absolutely, as an article, yeah?
Yeah.
That was my thing.
We maintain, we've, we've brought the, the building to the physical standards that it's, you know, we can't use it yet, but we've brought it so that it's not going to fall in on itself either. The roof, we've, we've had an estimate down on it, you know, that's not a life and death thing. It's not going to, you know, cave in tomorrow.
We did have a little bit of leakage, but.
But I think that was, is from ice more than anything.
Ice and wind, yeah. And then you also, I feel you should go even a step further. Do you want to, you know, sync, start a little fund for future enhancement of that building, meaning getting the kitchen back up and running? Making this part of our town.
I'm still getting people from Gageville that want to get involved and form a committee and they're paranoid that it's going to be used not for town functions. You know what I mean? It'll be sold off and they, they want to be involved in this. This is great. We should, I almost think we should form some kind of a committee where we invite some of those people to be on it and select, select person and maybe somebody else that's not from Gageville.
But yeah, that, and that's, that's great, but we ought to find out what the census overall. Is that even necessary? Is it worth it? Do they want to get rid of it? Or do they really want to enhance it and give a community?
Down to who are the players that are even interested in using it? And that's where somebody's still going to spend time and get a hold of all these different groups that
Absolutely.
They're being used in Westminster now, whether it's, I keep saying like Westminster cares, but there's a ton of, we keep seeing them. There's a ton of different groups that go into Parks Place and all that. Is there groups that want to be interested in it and so we need, to me, that's what I would be more interested, the community, reach out, talk to them. If, so they brought it to me, several met with me. One is if you did do anything, can you open it up for just the summer? Not really. You could for just meetings, but you don't have a bathroom, you don't have water. Well, then if you did, could you actually, so the dollar amount we're looking for is if you, if you did nothing, you did, you did nothing. Second is to just get it so it preserves it so it doesn't get any worse, which might be put in the roof. Third would be what it would take to get it turned on so you can use it for the summer. Because the disadvantage is what I'm concerned about is once you get into the winter, now you got to heat it because you can't have the water freeze and now you've got some more expenses, just doing maintenance and upkeep on a building that's not being used. If, if, it would be very expensive to use it for just the summer.
By Saturday, I'll have prices on getting it to ADA accessible to the front, to the main floor and the lighting. We'll have an estimate, it'll be a total estimate, but it will be, you know, something that we can throw at them that says, you know, to make this building open again, we need to do this and this. That's all the fire, safety, lighting and our wheelchair ramp, our handicap ramp. So those two items, we could unlock that door again. This is what it's going to cost. Plus we have to think about the, the roof. So
And we're still on, we're still not talking about bathrooms in the place that, we're just talking about.
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. That's just open the door so they can
Basically, so it would be like Westminster West Town Hall.
Exactly. And if they did have a function that they really wanted, they could always rent a porta potty.
Yeah.
For a bigger function.
But the town would have to be made aware of any, anything going on in there.
It would be, it would be more.
Exactly.
Is that policy?
We have that policy.
Yep.
I think, I think we're not there yet, but it was, it'd be more of a comeback saying, these are the people that we keep throwing out, like the sheriff's department and all that, but if you can get enough usage out of it, then I think you can justify
Over there in Westminster.
Yep, exactly.
Oh, really?
So any more questions on this year we're in now?
Well, I don't know when this comes in, but we, at, at what point are we going to talk to the town about paying for the town hall? I mean, the capital improvement fund is the town hall fund, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we have about half of what we need.
And I, I disagree with talking to different contractors that we have, we're a shy of about a third of what it will take. And I think we're on the right schedule in that we know we needed that first, we need this lift second, then we can tear out the front and put the, the doors in. And then we have to regroup. Then we have to look at it and say, okay, this is how much money we have left. This is how much money we, we need to spend. I have stopped Arnold and Skangus from doing any more.
Dinking around.
Yeah, well, we just got another bill for another eight thousand dollars for all of that estimate, that book that they proceeded to give to us.
For what now?
For the book that we just received that I showed you last meeting with all the estimates that are so high that I, I just, I emailed her back and said, do not do any more work on this building. You're, you're so far over budget, we're not, we don't know.
We just spent eight thousand dollars and the end result is we put the back exit.
We got that.
We did that.
What I'm just saying.
Which will help us. That, that report will help us moving forward with all these projects because now it's kind of it's, it's outlined with the historic preservation details to it. We've definitely paid for it, so we can use this as, as we see fit. So that when we start doing these phases, when we get to that point where we're, we're, we have a handicap access, we have the, the front doors redone, then we will regroup. That might be a year, maybe two.
Okay.
So that's my feeling is, is that we keep moving forward until.
Moving forward anyway, so that's.
Right.
Yep. All right, good for this year.
So good for this year? Okay, so in your packets, you have the proposed budget. These have not changed, but please bring it to town meeting. I, I want the revenue first and that's this page, the single page. You're going to look at this and look at the very top line, property taxes. And it says it went up two hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Well, that number is a little misleading because we reduced the previous year FY, the, the one that we're in by two hundred thousand dollars with surplus at, at town meeting last year. We had a hundred thousand to put towards it, they added another hundred thousand. So realistically, we're thirty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars. Asking more from the taxpayers. Craig, you're looking at this.
Are you mixing years up? Are you mixing years up?
I am not. I am not.
Last town meeting.
Because again, look at, look at your, your, your budget.
Yes.
You have the two hundred thousand in FY eighteen, that's the year we're in.
This is FY eighteen? Okay.
Okay, so that's what offset our property taxes last year. So as the audit said, we got a one-time bump, but now we're going up. And this is why, is we gave ourselves a two hundred thousand dollar relief last year, the, the year we're in. But this proposed, proposed year, we don't have a surplus to, to throw at it. Okay, so that's going to be a question. People are going to see that in the audit and they're going to say, what the heck? We're up two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Well, yes, we are, but.
Last year it would have been two hundred, roughly two hundred and thirty-six thousand.
That's, that's correct. You're exactly right. It would have been one million, six hundred and seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars versus the seventeen sixteen. So it's not as bad as it looks. And it gets better as you, excuse me. It gets better as we go down through and start seeing that we've got quite a bit more non-taxable revenue also. Which lowered that, that two hundred and thirty-six that we asked for all the way down eighty-seven. Again, on the back page. Excuse me, but the, the total change is eighty-seven thousand. And that's because of non-taxable revenue that we're getting this year versus what we were expecting last.
Which is what we talked about, the state aid to highways.
That's correct. You can see the items in green, those are the big items. We got more state aid to highway. We've got more state aid to highway. We've got more in pilot, pilot taxes. Whole harmless went up by five, five grand. Go ahead.
You have a question. So you, we always say that delinquent property taxes can't be included in the budget and it's zero in FY '17 and FY '18. Why is it included in FY '19?
Do you read the line? What's it say? Delinquent taxes, sudnik.
What does that mean?
That's the land we buy.
Yeah. So what is that?
We know we're going to get that land. We know we're going to get $20,000 in delinquent taxes because we own the land.
Oh, okay.
So that's why I added it in there. It's, it's the first time we've ever done it.
Right.
I called and asked if I should put it in there and they said definitely. Because we're not going to own it for five years. We're going to sell it immediately as soon as the deed is, is given to us. So that's why I was able to add that in there.
Okay. And when we, are we going to owe the taxes to ourselves or is it the new owners that will owe the taxes?
Why we purchased this was because we can get all of the taxes that weren't paid this time, but also in 2009, we can do the legal fees and the taxes that were owed when she dropped it into, what's it called? Foreclosure, not foreclosure, but a...
Bankruptcy.
Bankruptcy, sorry, thank you. So we're going to be able to get about 22, 23,000 for it versus the '18 or '19 we were eligible for if we, if somebody had bought it at tax sale.
Yeah.
So we're actually going to, you know, reimburse ourselves more money by owning it.
Okay.
And we have three or four people that are interested already. And I haven't even talked to anybody about it, so.
Okay.
Everything pretty clear on that?
No, I'm not, I'm having a hard time. Bear with me. So I'm not supposed to add the change line? Is that what you're saying? You got 256,000, you only took 30 off, that leaves 226.
Where are you, Craig, now?
Top, the top of tax revenues.
So you start out with a...
You're forgetting the 200,000.
Well, I'm not forgetting it. It just doesn't come back over, so then you got to flip it all over.
So you got 56 here?
That's still mathematically doesn't add up because you're, you're at, if you take 256 and you minus 30, that's 226. If you adjust to two, that leaves only 26, or you come up with 87. I'm not mathematically following something.
There's other, there's other revenues tucked into this.
That's correct. The change goes laterally.
You start a property tax, so you come up with 256 that we started out, because somebody would look. And that's the 256.
Where's 256?
Change.
From page.
Okay, at the bottom line.
Right.
Yes.
256, you're saying we over, that's the change. So I'm just trying to calculate and you said, well, here's green, we got 30 of it back. Then everything else is zeros. They all, they stayed the same. Flip the page over and you say, well, there's 200,000, but that mathematically doesn't come back to 87. So what am I missing?
Because the bottom line was 2,500,000. That 200,000 came off the top number only, property taxes. So you're, you're trying to add the columns going down. You can't. You have to add them across. That's what shows the changes. So on the back page, the yellow, Craig, back page yellow, that total was 2,500,385, which was offset by taxation for a year surplus of $200,000. That's why that number is so inflated on the other side. Not, not the bottom line. That's what was, that was our budget, 2,500,000. So the difference between that one and this year's proposed budget is 87,000. You cannot add the changes down the column. That's not how this is slated. You can't do that, that way. Because if you're going to, then that 200,000 would be in the change column.
The front page is revenue and the back is...
No, this is all revenue.
It's all revenue.
Yeah. I'll figure it out.
The change goes this way, okay? Don't try to do a column.
You can't foot...
You can't do the change going down the column. Because you have that $200,000 surplus that is not in the change column. Because it's a one-time deal.
Well, yeah, because it's not falling through because even with a rainy day is...
That was, that was two years ago.
That was two years ago. So you're only trying to compare fiscal year '18 and '19, right?
That's correct. That's what the change is.
But... As a taxpayer, and you're talking property tax, the 256 never goes away. Because that's property tax.
6 never goes away.
It's tax revenue is property tax, or 236.
236.
The 236 never goes away because that's property tax.
Right, that's the, that's the increase of the...
That's correct.
Right.
Property tax.
So if you go to the voters and say, how much is the budget up? You're saying it's up 87,000, but if you go to the taxpayers, it's, but it's going to cost you 236 more.
Because of the surplus that we threw at it last year.
So, so what you, what you're saying is it's only up 87,000 if you considered that last year, if last year we had not put the surplus there.
That's what I'm trying to say. I guess where you're trying to compare the numbers, but in actuality, no matter what, we're going, we're going to raise the taxes 236,000 more this year than last year. You're coming, you're coming back and saying, well, wait a minute, there's 200,000. No, that never comes out as a property tax. That only comes out as expenditure.
The revenue, the total revenue.
Right.
Right. Our budget is up 87,000, but our tax, our property taxes will be 236,000 more.
Yes.
Because last year...
You know, like you said, as a voter, I'd be a little confused because you look at it and go, oh, it's only up 87. But because of what we did, we have to be upfront with them and that's where the 200,000 comes back into.
And they voted on that last year to use that 200,000.
We could have carried 100 over to this year and made it a little less of a blow. But instead, they took it all and so hence...
And we did say if they used it last year...
We didn't want to do this with the tax rate. We wanted to be able to try to ease...
Well, didn't it complicate it? You're throwing in the 200,000, we didn't tax them by mistake.
That has nothing to do with this.
Has nothing to do with the revenue.
That's correct, right.
But what I'm just trying to tell you is confusing the follow the state, so.
They're not going to see this.
It's in the town report.
It's in town, yeah.
So, but they don't, they don't have the change column. There was not enough room to put it in the town report, so they lose the change.
So somebody says to you, now, we never go back to the original, when I got on, we always did pennies on it, you know, so how much is my taxes going up on it? So in the same conversation, what, why did I read in the paper today that the school budget's going up 11%? Is that right?
The high school.
Is that what it is? So, I mean, in the picture of taxation from Westminster, if we hit them with a 4%, they're going to hit them with 11%?
That's what that report says.
Thought last year they were telling us where they were, they were in good shape, it was going to go down.
Then the state put a 10 cent.
Now, you're not talking the high school, you're talking the...
I picked the paper and it had highlight Westminster. You read it and it's got our, our numbers in there and it said school, it all said school, 11% increase, 11. something increase.
I don't know what this school is, to be honest. I do know, I read the, that report that's sitting on that desk right there from the high school and it's up 11, 11 and a half percent.
It just, it didn't say the high school, it just said school budget up 11%.
Well, it's because that's the way they reported it.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know what this budget's up. I'm sorry, I just haven't been following it. I've been trying to deal with ours.
No, but in the taxation, somebody asked you, our budget is, let's say, 4%.
That's correct.
And it's 4%. It's 4% above what, you know? Is it 4% above our budget's up?
Last year.
Or is the taxation going to be a lot more because of the 200,000? Yeah.
You can't do it that way, Craig.
Right.
The budget is the budget, it's up 4%.
We told them last year when...
The surplus was voted on to help with taxation. They could do it this year. They could go on the floor and say, you've got 401,000 left.
Basically, it's 236,000.
Put 200,000 to it.
But you would explain it to them and say, wait, listen, let's be honest.
Now we're getting, now we're getting...
Your tax bill, don't, I've been haunted, three years ago, when the school sat there and said, oh, your taxes are not going up. And then they came back and said, oh, wait a minute, we lost, after they said it, they lost over $400,000 worth of tax revenue from the state because the state fined them, remember? And the people got their bills and we were coming in going like, wait a minute, what happened to our taxes? Well, because it all came out of property tax. And that's all I'm just trying to say. Forget the increase, I don't care if it's 14%. They're going to sit there and go, well, how much did my property tax go up from last year? Now, last year went down, no question at all, but you only compared it once. I can only remember my last year's bill, okay? And I got this much bill. So let's be honest with you, even though we only go up 4%, your bill might show 8% because of...
So do you want the figure for town meeting on how many pennies on a dollar the average taxpayer is going to pay? But we need to have the figure if that's what you want.
Yeah. We don't have a tax rate created. So I've been, I've been playing with this. Right now, just as it sits, you're, you're going to be paying like $83 on a $100,000 home. $83 more.
Actually, ours is pretty easy because the schools are more common because then they apply for money assistance. We don't. Whatever our bill is, is our bill.
Right. Then if the, if there's the actual state rate comes in and equalizes the, the amount, because we're only up by like .01, which is like a cent and a half on the tax rate. But if they come in and they lower our tax rate, which is, that's what they're saying, they're going to give us a property break this year, then you, that dollar amount is completely bogus. I wouldn't try to throw pennies on, on a dollar. I just wouldn't do it.
Well, the only way you can do it would be to go back to comparing...
But you could be so far off, it's not funny.
The best way would be if they asked you all, if, to be honest with you, you're looking at 87, that's what we always used to say.
$83.
$83 on $100,000, that's the best way to relate it, I guess.
And that is a crapshoot because we still don't have the, the bottom line, so...
Well, and then we really don't know until we ask the end of the year and see what the value, the total. Because one year we thought we were great because we did townwide praise, thinking it was going to be 300 million, it came in at 270, so then everybody's rate went up.
As, as of last year, when we made the mistake. Their tax rate was, was supposed to be here and then ended up down here because we made the mistake. So everything has its, its limitations and we're stretching it by guessing at what we could possibly be raising the tax rate in, which hence pennies on a dollar on your home. It's a crapshoot at this point, so I just don't feel comfortable about throwing, throwing numbers out there at this early date. But it's up to you guys, so you know what? It's, it's approximately $83 on a $100,000 home. Okay, so now we're at the, the point of the expenditures. And at this point, like Craig, like you said, somewhere and somehow, you have to mention that the budget that you're about to vote on has a, has a assumed rate increase of salaries of 3%. That is the maximum. We will be looking at it in June as we did in the past three years when the information is readily available to how much the cost of living...
Where are you on this? Where are you on? You're just reading something?
I'm just, I'm just talking to you.
We discussed it in June, whether we wanted to increase wages 2% or 3%.
1%, half a percent, no percent?
Yeah.
Absolutely. At that point, you'll have what the state average is and the national average.
On the other hand, I don't know if that's important as much as, because if, if we gave them 6%, but we cut a staff member, that's all to care about. And that's my whole point is if this staff in this building, we've done real well. In the last five years, we've anything, we've gone down a little bit. So whether we give you 3% or 5% is sometimes we pull in the chains and you end up having two people, one person do what two people did. So we made so many different adjustments to it. As, as the select board, we're, our responsibility is to keep that budget within line. We've done a pretty good job at it.
You have. And that 3% though, is only over last year. You're trying to explain why your budget, your expenditure budget is, is higher. This is how you're going to do it. The employee is estimated at 3% not to exceed. It could go down, probably will go down. The way the rates right now, it looks like two and a half is what they're estimating, but it's way too early. In June, you'll, you'll have all the information that you need to make a, a sound judgment on this. So you've got 3% assumed raise, employee raises, 5% for health insurance. And somewhere in the, in the conversation, you should be saying that the, we have a new carrier, MVP, because the old carrier, Blue Cross Blue Shield, wanted 22 and a half percent raise. We also are carrying a 5% increase on property casualty, workman's comp and unemployment insurance. This year, we have the $25,000 audit versus the $10,000 audit. We have an increase in lister's salary and hours. We're trying to lessen our, our need for the assessor. Road crew wages are at seven positions and they, they maintained at that. Act 64 mandates, there's 71 sections to be repaired on our new maps that we just received. This makes the road budget over by $50,000. Trash and recycling is up 3%, which is still substantially lower than the second bid four years ago, which was 192,000 versus 257,000. And all that summed up, we're over by, just over 4% of an overture of $87,31.
I have a question. Are we going to have an assistant treasurer?
Why would we bring that up now?
It's in there. It's in the budget. None of this was apparent when, when this budget was being set together.
I think that's what I keep saying, we have to just, we have to just reassure them that that dollar amount's going to be there, but to also say that we have, I won't say the freedom, but we have the right to move positions around in money as we've done in the past.
Well, yeah, if you did away with the position, then that money is, is allocated for...
It's in that same group.
Exactly.
And that's why I always say in the past, we always look at two groups, highway group and the building group. If you look at the building group, there's people in here, we've had every year a change. We've had, you know, from a, from a lister position to be moved. We've combined two, we divided back. I mean, with Sonya this year, we did it three times, you know? We separated it, she took it back and then she separated it back again. And every time we would kind of split off and figure out how much money goes here and how much there. And we're going to have to do the same thing with this.
So you'll, in June, we'll be making those decisions, I'm assuming.
Where is the payout for Mark's retirement? Is that, will that be in the current year?
That's in our current year and that's why we're a little bit over budget right now.
Right.
On that wage line.
A little bit about how much?
While we paid him...
Eight thousand.
What's that?
You got it in here, it's 58,000.
58,000. So that's approximately what we're looking at over. But again, we're only two-thirds done in the year, so...
Does that include what we did on the other?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
On the other?
Employee that, that required.
No, actually, I was talking about the last negotiation on healthcare that we dealt with.
Yes, it's all in there. He's paying for that.
Well, one reason it's going to catch up is we went from a full-time position.
That's correct.
For the next, rest of the year, it's going to be a part-time position. So we allotted for a full-time.
At best, yes.
So sooner or later, we're going to give back quite a bit of that.
That's correct. So again, moving further into the packet, I'm still under the assumption you want these out on the rail with the explanation.
Yep.
These are the newest and greatest. You've got those in your packets from last time. So tonight, if you don't need these, you have them already at home, leave them here and I'll just use them as part of the, the surplus on the rail. So if you don't need another copy of this, you have one at home, then... So if you don't need another copy of this, you have one at home, then leave them here. But if you do, if you need it...
Yes, it is.
I still got this, so...
We made no changes from last meeting to this.
The only one I have is the one I brought.
Keep it. Then keep it, you're good. The one in the packet, you don't need to...
Where's the one in the packet that I keep trying to say? There's one here?
I have one.
You all have.
Everybody else has one.
You have one.
He had his one that you had. I didn't need one.
Mint?
Yes.
Restless.
I already gave it back.
I know, I saw you give it back. I almost knew I had it.
Doesn't matter, Craig, keep it. It doesn't matter. I have, I'm going to make 120 of them.
These mints wouldn't even be here if I didn't especially request them, you know? So it's like, and I didn't even get one out of this project.
Here, I brought my own.
Nice guess. That was a swing and a miss. There.
The only complaint I still have, thank God I carry a flashlight. Been two weeks. Obviously, you don't work any nights here.
I don't. I don't go to the bathroom at night, I'm sorry. So you have these, this is again, the funds, but it's not going to be on the railing. You'll have them in your pack, they're in your packet, if you don't, they haven't changed, but please bring them to town meeting so you can fall back if there's a question to be answered. It's all of our major and non-major and private purpose trust funds. All the activity for the last year, which is in our town, our audit, but again, this is the current years.
And tell me what's been, you told me this FY '16, there was 180,000 in the equipment fund. We just hadn't spent it yet?
That's correct. At that point in time, that we hadn't spent it because we ordered a truck and it wasn't actually paid for until 2017.
Yeah.
So it looked like we bought two trucks in '17. Then digging further, you have that salaries breakdown that Craig wanted. If you all have it, please bring it to town meeting.
So in 2015, we had a financial officer that we paid 13,195, plus we had the assistant treasurer and the treasurer.
I didn't bring the one I had all marked up, but yes.
It's on the back of this.
And then in 2016 and '17, we haven't had a financial officer, so that was a...
But you can see since, I got the old one. You got the new one? Isn't there a new one?
Yeah.
Isn't there a new one that...
Yeah, that's what we got at the last meeting, so...
There was a new one that you had, like 218.
I did not bring it. I didn't bring that one either.
You asked for the lister administrative assistant, and you wanted the...
This one right here, this one's, you went back and changed that, send that to me. That's the one you gave me last time. You updated this one. Because I asked you to add... You added a position back in there, too, that was in that office.
Okay, so I added listers to this and we, then the assessor. You wanted those two added. You still want them?
I think, I just, in the whole building, that's our total, no matter what.
Okay, so you want me to go back to this one?
I'll hand it back to you in a second.
Because the old, the old one, the one that I just put in your packet does not have them.
Right.
But I can go back and I can, I can hand them to you guys on, at, on the floor.
Well, it doesn't, I guess it doesn't have to be there. I mean, I only, what I was just giving them, they said, yeah, that's everybody. Because we are paying the listers a little more because now they don't have a full-time person there, so we've paid them a little bit more.
Yep, and the assessor's doing less and their appraisal will go down.
And the assessor's numerate, right?
Yeah, right.
So that's all I was trying to do, like the total.
So to you, I can, it's not going to change from that one, Craig. If I do redo these, it's not going to change from the one you already have. And I can do that.
Since we're not going to hand it out, this one's fine.
Okay, all right.
This one's fine.
I am.
Who's, so you're the zoning administrator and the administrative assistant?
No. No, Kevin's the administrative assistant.
Well, he's got zoning administrator highlighted after administrative assistant.
Oh, I see.
Which is, I don't know, so I'm a little confused.
Zoning administrator.
Got that.
Administrative assistant zoning. For zoning. For zoning. Administrative assistant town manager.
Just cross out the name.
Administrative assistant zoning administrator.
I had one with all the names on it.
We can go through them right now and put names to them.
No, well, I did it, I can give it to you.
I'm the first one. Kelly's the second one.
Yep.
I'm the third one.
That's a one.
Ally, Patty.
Forty-two thousand, forty, three, two.
Don't add those two together.
Russ, Kelly, Russ, Ally, Patty.
You just told me to.
Yeah, but half of that is Karen.
What are you talking about? No, it's Kelly.
Yeah, these are totally still.
Yeah, but part of that is Karen.
This is in this position, so when you're all done, if somebody says what he makes, he'd be making this and this.
Yep.
Kelly would be making this and this.
Yep.
Okay. These are blank now.
Because we don't have a position anymore.
But if you look at your budget, you'll find Kelly isn't making that much.
It's down.
For 2019.
Well, this is, only goes to 2017.
I know. That's why I say part, most of that is Karen.
Yeah, at the time.
That's actual dollars.
Yep. But it does...
That's all Karen.
Yeah.
Not Park, Park Karen.
Yeah.
The position is now Kelly, but in 2017, it was Karen.
It was all.
And Kelly isn't making as much as Karen does.
That's correct. I only put the names so somebody...
So you'd know what position to put.
Because when we're all done, these two is all we have, this position, this and this is all that is in there.
Yeah.
Even though, I'm going to question, this is this.
So, and this is, was my question, is so back to 2015, we had, you know, and this comes back together, you know, we had this, because we had this financial officer, plus we had the treasurer and the assistant treasurer, so we were actually spending that, that, and that, all during, all during the same...
Yeah.
And, yeah. Or I don't know what he was doing, actually. Technically, I'm not sure.
Okay. I'm good at the moment.
So anything else on financials? Anything else on the town meeting prep?
Yep. Well, we're actually kind of on town meeting prep now. In your packet, you have the model fund reserve policy.
Model fund reserve policy.
Yep. What legal book did you take that out?
So we've been asked, you've been asked at town meeting, and you've been asked through questions from Cynthia, which we haven't gone through yet, which we will next. Are you going to set a limit to the reserve, reserves that you're going to keep for emergencies? As I told you before, 5% is typically what they leave in there for maintenance of the general fund, and 15% is emergency management, making it roughly 20. You can set the amount to whatever you feel is the appropriate amount. I know Westminster wasn't hit nearly as hard with Irene as some of the towns around us, and we went into $1,680,000 worth of debt, just with that one storm. Having the $400,000 of surplus on hand gets you started in repairs that day. It pays for contractors to move in immediately and start putting your roads back together so that you have no one that's stranded. If you don't have that, you're going to go through the process of trying to get a bank loan quickly. It will happen quickly, but that's why they say 15%.
So if we do 10, it would be 200,000.
10 would be 200,000.
Which we've always been...
15 is about 300.
We've always been 120 to 220, somewhere in that bracket.
Years ago, years and years ago, yes.
At one point, we were 520 now.
But at this point, at this point in time, you always should have 5% of your budget in the till. And that gets you by from tax to tax. So from September to February, from February until you get your new taxes in next September, you have to have a working budget. You have to have monies in there. So that carries you over when the expenditures start and you don't have any tax dollars coming in. That helps you continue. Or you can borrow it. How silly would that be if you do have it in your till? You're not going to get that free. You're going to pay interest on it. That's an argument that needs to be hashed out from taxpayers to yourselves, and come up with a number. Come up with a percentage. So you should have at least 5% to maintain your general fund, and the emergency fund is whatever you guys deem necessary.
And so you would see that 5% amount, where would you see that 5%?
Right in the general fund, right?
Right.
Because we don't have anything else now.
Right, exactly.
We got rid of the...
No, no, I know that. So there would be that 5% as a line item.
No, it would always be the general balance in the general fund.
Right, right. As in the audit, when they're talking about, yes.
Yes, you would always see it in there.
And then there would be another fund that would be under here.
No.
No. Okay, so you're not talking about two different things when you said 5%?
That 5% is just in the general fund.
Yeah, exactly.
Always ready to go.
Yes, right.
The 15 is, we tried this. We tried to put it in a little subcategory in our general fund. Taxpayers didn't want that.
Right.
They want it right on the bottom line. So the bottom line...
Which is better for us, because then we have free use of it. When we earmark it for something, then we can only use it for what we earmark it for.
Right. So now, it's all in there. It's all-inclusive, and it's $401,000 right now.
Right, right.
So again, it's up to you to ask the taxpayers, what would you like to see in the surplus? Or you say, you just keep it to yourselves and do what we've been doing, is it's a fluctuating game, we spend it, and we give it back to the taxpayers as we see fit. That's up to you, five.
Right, so we're not talking about a reserve fund as indicated in this policy.
We have no policy at this point.
We have no policy.
No, I know, I know we don't.
This tells us, this gives us a parameter, say, within a realm of 15 to 20%, the town of Westminster will try to approach, to keep that amount in their general fund.
Ah, okay. So you're not, we're not talking about a reserve fund, we're just talking about this number right here, which says 5%.
That's correct.
And we're saying right here says 5%.
So that we don't have this conversation ever again, that our surplus is over what the taxpayers think it should be.
Our general fund will maintain a reserve of...
15 to 20.
15 to 20%.
10 to 15, whatever.
Well, if, in the past, too, what we've done is come June 30th, like, we were joking about it, but really, we would actually say, okay, we got, let's say, 600,000, so we say, well, now, this is before we go back to the voters and turn it back over into the year precedent, we would say, go fill the fuel tanks up, where we would pave it, maybe we'll pave a little bit more, where we would, you know, that we could spend, that was going to be earmarked maybe for the next year, but spend it now and get it done with. So you start up with full tanks like that. And then, and then other times, we've been weak, where we're going like, Jesus, let's just, we got just enough to carry through.
But Craig, you're talking two different things here. You're talking, your budget, that when we see we're coming into the end of the year, we have a surplus, yes, you can spend that as you see fit in that budget that you're in. But if you're talking surplus, a reserve fund, that's something different.
Right.
We're, we don't have a reserve fund.
That's what we're talking about. We do in the general fund. We used to have the rainy day account, they made it into our regular account.
It's a reserve.
So now, it's a reserve fund.
Yeah, you can call it, I call it still a general fund, just not earmarked.
It is the general fund.
It's a general fund. It's not earmarked for anything. I don't know why you keep calling it reserve. It's what we actually have in the bank. Okay, we have this much in the bank, we come to June 30th, we go, whoops, we got too much.
The reserve is, you can't spend that money unless you've got an emergency.
Well, you can't, but you also don't have, you haven't accumulated all your bills yet either.
So your reserve fund was established by the voters for the purpose of covering unintended, unanticipated revenue shortfalls and paying non-reoccurring and unanticipating general highway fund expenditures for the town. So that doesn't give you the right to spend it on anything you want, it's got to be for...
It's not earmarked for anything. It's not earmarked for anything.
It's got to be for general fund shortfalls. So if you had...
General highway fund.
If we got one hellaciously bad winter and you go way over on your salt budget, you can steal from that to help pay your bills.
You're taking the money and you're going to earmark it.
In the general fund. That's the reserve fund.
Fill your tanks because you feel like it.
Right.
You have a right to, if you, if in the amount of money, and that 150,000 that we put in for fuel, if you haven't spent it, you have a right to go and fill it up because it's already earmarked there.
But that's just in the, that budget year.
That's a surplus.
That's just in that budget year, not the bottom line. If you're going to earmark, that's what this is, is a policy, you're earmarking it as two different dollar amounts in the same general fund. One is considered reserve for any emergencies for the town, the other is just general budget, just...
That's what I said, and you said, no. And I said, yes, you have two different things, you have the 5% and then you have the reserve fund, you said we don't have them. I said, no, but we would talk about having one.
Exactly. In the same line item.
And I had the same problem the voters had. Once you earmark it on that reserve, you can only use it for that. So why would you not just leave it in the general fund? Because the general fund, you could use it for the same person, but you're not so much earmarking. So if you earmark it for reserve for emergency only, I don't know what the criteria is emergency other than you obviously have a storm or something. If you have it in the general fund, and all of a sudden, the salt bill comes in, you go, whoops, the guy dropped off too much salt because we're too short, yeah, you spend the money because it's in general fund. That emergency, yeah, I don't know what emergency is.
No, but it would be unanticipated highway funding expenses.
Because what will happen is exactly what happened last year. Oh, look, we have a surplus, we'll apply it to taxes.
Right.
You don't want to do that. You don't want to have...
No, you don't have to. The select board has always in the past voted on how much we reserve. We've never gone to the voters and asked them that, other than last year, we discussed it.
Well, that's what they're asking for, is a policy, that's what all three people have come in and asked for, is they want you to have a policy that's going to earmark a dollar amount in a percentage that will give them the satisfaction that they know they have a reserve, but you guys aren't spending out of it willy-nilly, you've got purpose for it. So that's what they were asking.
So what happens, as in last year, where, you know, we had the reserve fund, but we also had, you know, $200,000 worth of surplus. So what's going to happen in fiscal year 19, we'll say, if we have this fund with $400 and something thousand dollars on it and for some reason, you know, the state of Vermont unanticipated gives us, you know, $80,000 in whatever for, against taxes for their building, what are we going to...
They get it 2020.
What are we going to do with that surplus from this point on?
They'll get it the next year.
Who?
The taxpayers off the, they'll have a surplus given to the taxes. We will maintain that percentage.
So automatically, anything we have extra is going to go back to the taxpayers?
That's correct.
Right, it will be in the reserve.
Over that reserve amount that you've decided.
Whatever percentage, yeah.
What is confused, Craig, you keep talking about there's something there. We have not done something there.
Right, we haven't. And I think, don't the taxpayers have to vote to establish that reserve fund?
That's correct.
Yeah, so we would have to...
Well, what's the difference between a policy and a, the Delmaxi part?
If you read this, which that's why I threw it in here now, so you have a chance to read it, we'll bring it back up later, but you, as a select board, have the right to declare that dollar amount.
But they...
The taxpayers want to weigh in on it, as you know. They keep bringing this up.
Right, I understand that, but to actually establish a fund, like any special fund, I thought that the taxpayers had to vote for the establishment of a fund.
Well, we did. We tried to do it last time.
No, I mean...
They do on a fund. This is not a fund. This is, this is in the general pocketbook.
Even the model fund balance.
Well, then you better take out reserve fund because you got it right in the printing of the article at this point.
This is, really gets a little bit sticky because...
It's not a slush fund and it's not a rainy day fund.
No, don't call it slush and don't call it rainy day.
And don't call it emergency fund.
We had it in a perfect spot, in the general fund. We had it set aside in a pocket of the general fund where we knew that that dollar amount wouldn't be touched unless it was a rainy day, that was something hellacious happened to the town and that we could take that and use it efficiently.
But I don't want, it's, I will go back. We have the same people who said, what gave us the right to spend $14,000, let's say, on a roof? Why would we set us, if we go and do it that way, we would almost have to go to the voters and say, hey, I think this is emergency and I think we want to use it because we reserved it there. And they're going to say, what right did you have to take it? I don't know, but it's in general fund. That's why I thought we left the meeting last time. You know what? They did us a favor. They left it right here in general fund where we actually just have a balance. So who's pressing us to put this reserve fund?
You've got three different people that have asked questions about this.
So...
It's going to get brought up, trust me on this. So that's why I've given you this little piece of information.
What is brought up by this?
In corporate accounting, a reserve is required. It's...
I know, but I'm just going to say, we have never had it. We tried to do something last time and we got hammered. We looked pretty embarrassed in doing it. And I'm going, in the past, every select board, I've been on here, we sat and we discussed, how much do we, do we, what kind of shape? We're in pretty good shape because we got some others, okay, let's cut it down to 180. We'd be less than 5% sometimes, more than 5%. We kind of looked at it, we go, I don't know what's wrong with that system. Now, emergency coming up and when we did it, yeah, we kind of stalled sometimes where we didn't pay for a little while because we were waiting for the money to come in. That's different. You know what I mean? You're just waiting for some cash because you don't want to have to go borrow the money. But we've been pretty good about staying within our budget. Even when we had the flood, we went out and got an emergency loan. It wasn't that long. Because the only way we could do it, we had to wait for the governor to declare emergency before we could borrow the money.
This is why you have this surplus, so you can repair roads and continue public safety while you're waiting for that insurance.
Mm-hmm, the spire's are growing up. Apparently, there are people who would like to see that visible.
So you need to think about this and decide whether you want to make this a policy or whether you...
And so presumably, what they're asking for is...
Well, I guess I'm having a hard time. Why would I want to bring as a select board to them? And if they ask the question in the audience, then we better discuss it. And we should be prepared. But if we bring it to them, it's almost like we're asking for that reserve.
Well, if they bring it to us, I think the answer is if the taxpayers want to establish a reserve fund, they have to vote it into existence. And then, I'm assuming, I guess I don't know how much you get put into it every year. They vote every year like the capital, like the bridge fund? Or does a select board get to put a certain amount in?
Since I've been here, our surplus has only grown. So what it would stop us from doing is, is you've got this dollar amount and so as the surplus starts coming in, you have to start giving it back to the taxpayers. You don't have the choice of saying, we've got a capital expense coming up, we'll keep a little bit more. You have a dollar amount and every time it exceeds that, you have to give it back to them in surplus for the next fiscal year.
You aren't going to be able to buy an excavator if...
That, well, that's correct. You've got a, you've got bridge money that you had no idea was going to come in, came in, so we bought the excavator because it was perfect timing.
But yet again, we go back to, you know, because I went through that whole flood. We actually had the one on Beavis Hill. We decided at the end of the year, we had surplus, to go pay that $140,000 bill and be done with it. We turn around, did it the next year. When we get done the bridge, we're going, well, I don't think we're ever going to get paid. Let's go pay that $138,000. Then all of a sudden, lo and behold, they both come back in and we end up getting all the money back. So all of a sudden, we end up with a lot of surplus. But it wasn't that we didn't do it our homework. We actually said, we took surplus money that we had each year and go, let's just pay that off because I don't think we're going to get it.
Right, so this is your argument against a reserve fund. So that's fine, but if people in the audience say, you know, we want a reserve fund or how does that work? That's what we tell them. You have to vote at town meeting to establish a reserve fund.
Can it be voted from the open floor? Does that have to be an...
That I don't know, but...
See, that's where we had two discussions. The two different discussion was, how much surplus are you carrying? That's a good discussion. Is it 5, 10, 15%? Another one was, we tried to do any kind of a fund, wait a minute, now what's the criteria? Everybody started discussing that. Well, when can you pull it? When can you not pull it? And that's what I'm saying, to bring that back up again after we went to it last year, the good discussion is how much of a surplus should we just carry over every year? We discussed that. And voters were pretty generous. They thought as much as 10% or more, remember? They were saying, yeah, we don't have a problem with $400,000 you're carrying over.
Fine.
Right, so I think there's, I didn't want to get confused between the two different things. The surplus is a surplus and you know that, hey. So if we say, you know, we said to voters, well, we're comfortable at $400,000, we're not comfortable at 6, so when we get to 6, we're going to probably give you money back is probably what we're going to do. So they have an idea that somewhere there's a dollar amount that we know that we're not going to go over that and have it.
You are still, you're under no obligation to do what they request.
Right.
But it's nice to have them have input to make them feel a little more warm and fuzzy about our surplus. But it goes always back to a policy which is your responsibility. You're going to do this, no matter what you get for responses or questions, you're still going to have to come back and say, I don't want a policy, period. Or let's make a policy and we're going to keep this, we're going to keep within realm. Whenever possible, we're going to keep this percentage between 15 and 20%. 5 for the working, for the working general fund and a reserve of 10 to 15%. Making our total $400,000 that we're going to have in reserve.
So there again, you're broken into two different groups. Is that reserve the same as the surplus?
Yes, the reserve is the surplus.
Why would you have two different, yeah. Unless you have, yeah.
And the 5% is a working capital.
Yeah.
That's why, because I'm paranoid that they'll make a reserve fund, which then you've got to set parameters on when you can take it out.
If they set it, then you can't spend it until they give you permission.
Exactly what I'm saying. If they say, let's go ahead and give it 200 back, let's put 200 in reserve. Once you do that, somebody's going to raise their hand, well, how do you get it back out? I don't know.
Because once they, once they have input and once they vote, then it's their fund.
Which takes time because as, I mean, you're looking at...
Well, yes, but we have a bridge fund, we have an equipment fund.
It's all earmarked for a good reason.
We can't take bridge money and pay the listers.
Yeah.
It's a, it's the bridge fund.
Yes, no, I understand that.
You can say, here's dollars towards the bridge.
Emergency fund.
But exactly, they...
Reserve is such a big category.
That's why they do use the word reserve so that it can be very flexible for you to run this town the way you see fit. And buy the things that you have to have when you have to have them.
Yeah. I guess, I would see the legal term to differentiate between what's a reserve fund and what's a surplus. Because once you earmark reserve for a specific reason, then you didn't move yourself. If you leave it a broad category, I guess you're, I guess it's the same as the surplus.
It is, there's no question. It's just, it's just a word that you can try to maintain throughout the next 10, 15, 20 years until costs get up and then you might have to increase that.
Right, because if they, if they say 5 or 10%...
And I don't know where we're going with it because the voters always have a right to take a couple hundred out of reserve to lower the taxes.
Right.
So every year, they're going to go, well, how much you got left? 400. They could say, well, take 200 out. They have a right to do that.
They could do it this year, absolutely they could.
So I don't know, by cream...
They can't put you in debt, but they can definitely take the surplus.
Yeah. Well, you bring it up. We're cajoling.
All right, so now we're to the questions that we were given by Cynthia's daughter. Her front page is her first set of questions. So she was asking why we were overspending by $19,000. My response are on the next page, the over expenditure of $19,364 is divided as follows. 15, 968, 95 for the town hall and the Northwest Community House. $7,040 was used for the West West Town Hall, maintenance and fire safety. Both monetary items were maintenance and were uncalculated because of the urgency of an insurance audit. The decisions to spend the money were debated in many select board meetings. These meetings are open to the public. The final decision was based on public safety, pressure for occupancy. As for how this will be covered, the board realizes that there will be an over expenditure of the maintenance line items, but deem this as a necessity. All future improvements to the Northwest Community House are going to be brought up before the taxpayers, before being implemented. As for the West West Town Hall, the maintenance has been completed and is presently open to the public. Then the dollar amounts, 15, 969, plus $7,040 equals $23,009 minus the 35 budget, the 3,500 in the budget, makes it an overture of $19,509. Also on that, the next page, Chad responds to that. He wasn't sure where she got the numbers, but my explanation was appropriate. Number two.
Wait, what?
Chad's response is on the very back.
Basically, he was asking a question. He just asked the question, where did she come up with?
Where did she come up with the numbers? She wasn't, he wasn't sure and she, the 19, 364 was a mistake. It ended up being 19, what I said, 19, 509. No big deal, it's just within dollars. It being exactly the same. So anyway, that's the answer to that one. The next relates to the same question asked at town meeting last year. We, the taxpayers, knew then that the surplus being spent, and after looking at the financials this year, this is what I see. On June 30th, 2016, the town had a surplus of $666,075. From July 1st to June 30th, 2017, the town overspent the approved budget by $210,351. Majority of this seems to be $191,000 over expenditure to the transfer to the equipment fund for a capital purchase, assuming this is the excavator. An expense for the greater note was not budgeted for FY '17, with $200,000 of the remaining FY '17 surplus being used to reduce taxes in the FY '18 budget. We still have an undersigned surplus going forward, but what I would like to see is a proposed fund balance policy. Hence, this policy that I gave you just a minute ago that we talked about. This was discussed at last year's meeting, wondering if any further discussion happened between the board and the manager. My answer to that. The $191,000 over expenditure was from the transfer to the equipment fund for the capital purchase of an excavator, which was $91,000, and which the greater down payment of $100,000. Both of these expenses were because of unexpected revenue delegated to the equipment fund from tropical storm Irene's reimbursement. The $200,000 of the remaining FY surplus was voted on at town meeting and was increased by $100,000 on the floor when the select board wanted only $100,000. As for the level of surplus wanted by the select board slash manager, should be the 10 to 15% recommended by the state of Vermont for emergency management, which was our rainy day fund. Our present budget is $2 million, so this would work out somewhere between 200 and 300,000. This would be the minimum that all towns should have in each year, knowing that there will be a fluctuation in known surplus. Breakdown is in the audit on page seven. So going back to our $400,000, please don't get...
4,100, right.
Right, don't get misconstrued. That surplus is between 200 and 300 as recommended by emergency management. The other 5% is working capital. Working capital between tax payments. Hence, the $400,000 is just about dead nuts to where the states, as we should be. Number three. I understand from you in the audit that the tax rate was set incorrectly. Russ, I believe you told me it was this year FY '18 from the financials and asking Ally, I understand that it was FY '17. Either way, mistakes happen, I totally understand. God knows, I've made many mistakes of my own and see that other towns makes the same mistakes. I understand that the 130 and 15 appropriations were not included when the tax rate was set. How will we be making up the accommodations for that mistake? Will we supplement a bill or send it, or will we just transfer those for the next year? We have decided as a board and as the town manager that we had enough surplus in the present year that we're not going to have to send out another bill, that we're going to be able to consume it within the budget year. So we're not going to have to do that. So my answer to her was, referenced in paragraph, first paragraph on page seven of the audit report clearly states that we had a mistake in the tax rate. Accommodations for this mistap will be dealt with at the end of the year with adjustments to the unexpected surplus. This was discussed again at select board meetings. Number four. FY '17 actuals in the budget presentation are different than the financials. I figured it out that it was a tax sale purchase. I can't find the financials where that is. Do you know? So I gave that question to Chad Hewitt, that's on the very back of that. And he states that, yes, this is a journal entry that we did. The town purchased the parcel at tax sale and wrote itself a check and then showed it as a delinquent tax revenue. We had to reverse this as the town can't create revenue on its own. If another party buys the parcel, then yes, it is revenue, but not when the town bought it. When we spent time breaking it out of the tax sale fee income and the tax sale fee expenses, these are reported at gross on the NIMRIC trial balances during our review stage. It was determined that it had to be a net, we had to net these down. Therefore, on the review, you will not see the $12,831 tax sale fee expense. This amount was netted down with the $16,268 tax sale fee income. In the review, you will only see $3,437 as tax sale fee income, the netted amount. The reason you have more income than expenses, all relates to timing. Personally, I don't see with the need to expand NIMRIC. That's continued on her request. Between Ally and Lori, you are getting adequate reports. Also, you should know Westminster reports are on a cash basis of accounting, money in and money out, where Cynthia came from Putney, where it uses a modified cash basis of accounting, just a different concept. So, those are the questions that she had, those are the answers that were given to her. They all kind of seem to blend in and make sense after you actually look at what the audit states and what it actually is showing on our accounts.
So, at the end of last year, we had a surplus of $401,000.
That's correct.
But we don't really have a good idea about, right now, what that might be?
Yes, we do. In the present, in the present presentation I gave you, I thinking that the expenditures will bring about $10,000, and the revenue will be about $160,000. So we will be looking at about $170,000 surplus to the, to the 401. So we will have to do something back to the taxpayers next year in the surplus to take off property taxes.
If we vote to do...
You're right.
A fee, if we don't vote to do a fee, we...
It's up to you guys what you want to keep in there.
To do a fee, what's a fee?
If we vote on this policy, then that, but we haven't done that yet, so...
No.
That's what we're gonna cogitate on.
Right.
Cogitate, that's what you do most of the time.
Sleep.
I can, I can see the wheels turning.
All right. Questions on FY17, 18, or 19?
That last one was some freaking accountant verbiage, because that wasn't easy to follow, that last one.
I got it, and I understood Ally trying to make it a paper trail, where, where she actually wrote the town a check to, to the town, so that the tax, tax sale would be complete. But going back to the accounting, you, you kind of figured it out, that you can't make a profit on nothing, so until someone buys the property, we can't show it as revenue. So the only expense out of pocket that we had was the legal fees, and we grossed out $3,400 worth of revenue.
I would not want to have to read that answer for to the people, because that, that, that's a real accountant verbiage, that's for sure.
It is, but it, it means that you cannot create a profit within ourselves, yet. As soon as we sell that piece of property...
Yeah, makes sense.
Then we can show it as revenue, because it will be revenue, in the delinquent tax line, because that's back taxes that are old to the taxes, to the, to the town.
So let me go back a minute to the surplus, the $401,000 from last year, and perhaps $170,000 from this year, added together.
Yep.
So presumably, if you took 200,000 to 300,000 as sort of an emergency fund, whether it's official or not, and then 5% working capital, which is, I don't know, what is that?
$100,000.
$100,000, so that would be perhaps as much as $300,000 that...
$400,000.
$400,000, beyond that, that the, that the taxpayers could ask for to go into tax relief?
That's correct. So you have, right now, you have the perfect amount of money in there. That $401,000 is exactly what the...
Right.
The state and, and auditors want for a capital fund. You have that exact amount. So any surplus that you show this year, you could completely give it all back to the taxpayers.
So, and when Doreen was here, Doreen was here, we used to get statements, because in every town I go through too, say the same thing. You know how you have tax income coming in twice a year, but just before then, you're down to pretty skinny. And I remember even Doreen saying, you know, "We gotta go get some money in order to get through a few weeks." So when we have $400,000, you actually can use that money to pay, to keep paying your payroll, and even though you're going down, even though you know that, that you're gonna get another million dollars in, in a few weeks. By creating a reserve fund that you can't touch, now I'm going back to the discussion, are you actually gonna handcuff you that you can't use it for just regular cash flow to keep yourself going?
I, I think we're, we're getting stuck on the reserve fund versus what, what is really proposed as a reserve fund. It's in the general fund, there, only restrictions are what you make them. It, it, you, you say it's for emergencies, but an emergency can be, the school ran out of money, and the town has to cover their bills. So we give them a, an advance on their monies. We've done that before. It's anything like that. It's not just a purchase of a park bench out front, because we want a park bench out front, that's not an emergency. But the 5%, Craig, that you have in that, that general fund is for working capital, meaning when you get skinny on that end of that fiscal year where you're, you don't have any taxes coming in, you have that surplus to fall back on. You can, you can use it to cover your expenses, so you don't have to borrow.
We used to get statements, well, we have, we don't anymore, but you used to say, "We're down to $80,000, but we're okay, because we're still only three weeks away from getting a million dollars in from taxation, because it's gonna be our second payment." But when you ask that, on paper, if you ask them, "Well, how much you have?", you would say, "Oh, I got 400,000 or 500,000, because on paper, I got 400,000." Knowing that in the course of the year, you're gonna get the 2 million, but you don't have a, a chunk of it yet. Right, so I said, "I would hate to handicap ourselves that we couldn't use it, even though if you looked at it and you say, 'What is a balanced by accrual in it?'" You'd say, "I got this much, but actually in my checkbook, I only have this much right now."
I, I think you're right, I, I, I agree. I don't think we're, we're trying to strap you as, as much as, as, let the, let the taxpayers weigh in on it. I think they need to, and I think they, they want to.
And this is an option for them.
And that is. And you guys will still be able to deem what you feel is necessary in the budget.
Okay, let's move on. New business.
I have absolutely no new information. I thought I would, that's why it's on there. Roger was supposed to do this in January. I've called him January, middle of January, beginning of February, middle of February, and he keeps telling me that he was going on vacation, now he's back, and the last one, he's working on it. So, I put it there, thinking I would have good information for you, and I don't.
I instructed the town manager to lock the gate. It hasn't been done yet, because I feel that that will move Roger along to either do something or not do something, one or the other, but we need, we can't continue this in limbo, and, and he should have been paying taxes on it by now, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, so lock the gate.
I would, I would say that's...
Is he using it?
Get some kind of reaction out of him.
Yeah, he's plowing it and using it, absolutely.
When's the last time you talked to him?
Two weeks ago.
So he's back from Florida?
Yes.
He's back from Florida. But he needs to move along on this, otherwise I think he's just gonna, he's gonna drag his feet as long as he can, but maybe I'm wrong, but... I'm just feeling that he'll drag his feet as long as he can drag his feet.
Okay.
Managers' report.
Just some updates, just so you don't forget. Westminster Meads Public Sale is on the 8th. I am planning to go to represent the town's interest. We have quite a bit of interest there. You do have a spring select board workshop that is, is available, where it's running out of time. They give you like, a week, week and a half after town meeting to actually sign up for it, so if someone's interested, at least give me a heads up. The backdoor construction is nearly finished. I sent around the picture before the meeting. They're, assuming they'll be done tomorrow. In your packets is the draft of the LEOP plan. It is shaped a lot different than, than what it was shaped before, and...
LEOP plan.
You guys don't have it?
I don't think so.
Oops, I didn't pass them out.
We have no LEOP.
You have no LEOP. That's the operations, emergency operations plan, the local emergency operations plan. It is in a different format than what we're used to, and this is supposed to be easier to...
We have extras.
Send them back. Supposed to be easier to monitor while the emergency's happening, and what it is, is a lot of, of contact information. When you're in the need of resources, it's really hard to, to be flipping through a phone book, which are, as we all know, are useless, trying to find phone numbers for, for sources of information. So, that's what it's supposed to be for. It's supposed to be a, a working tool that you have on the...
Is it the draft, or is it the actual?
This is the draft. I'm gonna let him read it, and then we have to adopt it soon. I'll put it on the March 14th docket, if you have a chance to read it. That'd be awesome, because it has a lot of really good information in it. We've spent quite a bit of time getting all of the resources together.
Shelby Bee has an email address, he doesn't want to put it on the town. I didn't know Shelby Bee had an email address.
Joanna?
No, I got it right now, it's right there. That's why I was like surprised.
That's all I have.
Of course, it's not listed, where he's chairman of the select board, because he didn't want anybody to send him anything. He's listed as a planning chief. What is, what is a planning chief? What do you do?
I'm chairman of the select board.
So you got another title called planning chief?
That's what he gave me.
Planning chief is, is, in the ICS world, is to move forward with finances and strategies to have interest from the town, that we're not spending money foolishly, but we're moving in a direction that everybody agrees with. So if you're planning on, on spending money, how are you gonna do it?
We're, we're all kind of planning chiefs.
Really?
Oh, you'd all, you'd all be called into an emergency...
I would say you'd...
But the chair is always the planning chief.
Expecting one of those well-drilled rigs?
Do we expect on what?
To inspect one of those well-drilled rigs?
Inspect one? Well, inspect, oh, you mean as a register?
Yeah, no.
Let's move on.
Let's move on.
Boards and commissions.
In the Gazette, I just finished it today, there's many openings. If Kevin Hughes is, is elected to the select board, he's gonna leave two positions, one on the DRB and one on the planning commission. The planning commission is down to three people, with one leaving shortly. So whoever is the alternate from the select board to the planning commission is going to have to start going to the meetings, or they can't even have a quorum. We need people.
You know, the best alternate would be Kevin.
To the planning commission, I, I agree, but...
And the DRB. If he wants to do all those meetings.
Yeah. It will be up to you to talk it over. We'll have a reorganization meeting on the 14th.
I never did understand, because in the way of the past, we did have a select board, but I know Toby had a thing about a selectman can't be on the, why can't a selectman be on the DRB?
They, it's against state statutes.
Wait, wait, wait. The select person at the DRB level can be part of the voting process if needed. Planning commission is not. It's not a voting member. They go, they put their input, they, they make a meeting, a quorum, but they don't have voting interest. But a DRB does, representative.
But you can't hold the positions, you can be an alternate, but you can't be...
Well, like I said, I don't 100% know, because when I first got on, we didn't have a DRB. We had, you know, we had two different boards, and we actually had one on each. But the DRB, you do vote, where the planning commission, you kind of, do you really vote for anything?
No, you don't.
You don't vote on anything, you just plan things and do something.
Exactly.
But, you know, on the DRB, you're voting for something.
If you're needed, you're, you're an alternate to the DRB. So, we don't need them often, but on the PC, it's gonna be a full-time position for a while, until we get some, some warm bodies.
I was sure Nancy was, I, I think Nancy said that she was gonna be...
On both?
On one of these boards, you know, because she wasn't gonna have anything to do.
She says she can't sit through one of these select board meetings.
She's going to volunteer.
Nancy is taking some me time.
That's all right, you don't have to take me time till you're 90.
Close.
All right, other business?
We need a motion to accept the resignation of Ronnie Place.
Who would we accept the resignation of Ronnie Place?
I'll second. Motion's been moved in, in second and two, accept the resignation of Ronnie Place.
I think we should add that motion, that it's effective March 31st.
That's correct.
Of Rod Forman, effective March 31st, 2018.
Yep, sounds good.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carries. During the next meeting, March 14th, 2018.
No, we have to, if we meet as a select board, we actually have to...
It's already been warned as a town meeting. If you have a meeting before the town meeting, then it's gotta be warned. You don't need one this time. Yes, there is warrants to be signed.
There are warrants to be signed.
Don't we need to make a motion to adjourn this?
You do.
So who's gonna make a motion to adjourn? I'll move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second and two, going to adjourn.
Can I, can I say one thing? This is Nancy's last meeting.
Before adjournment?
And before adjournment, and I personally have, have really, really, really appreciated all the work that she does for...
Did you get her flowers for this?
I did not.
Speech?
She told me today, tonight, that it was her last meeting. I had totally forgot about that, so...
I forgot about it too.
You didn't make any soup for her?
She's, she makes the soup, she makes way better soup.
No, I'm asking her.
Oh, no, but I'm...
This is the last day you're gonna be here, you didn't make any soup to share with her or anything?
No, but I'm making corn chowder for the 14th.
How about, how about clam chowder?
Uh, pot fish may make some clam chowder.
Some people are allergic to clam chowder.
Some people allergic to corn.
But Nancy, thank you very much for your service.
It's like a vegetable.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, it's been fun having you here.
It's been fun being here.
Yeah, well, not fun enough, apparently. Sorry about that.
So we are in adjournment.